Good morning, welcome to the August 26 regular session of the Board of Supervisors. Roll call please.
Grant.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Layland.
Here.
Burtonback.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Please join in a moment of silence and reflect on this morning's actions. Please rise at your rank and join for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, agenda received as proposed or as amended. A footnote, I'd like to pull. Item eight C, the local preference. Just have that conversation next week once we're able to see a clean version of that list. Remove.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item two, public comment. This is a moment for anyone to speak to an item that is not on this morning's agenda either through rumor online. Soon done. Item three, claims of payments, resolution of the Board of Supervisors to approve expenditures and that the county authority be authorized directed to issue payments against various settlements of such claims as allowed. Remove.
Second.
Good morning Board, our total bill payment today is one million eighty-nine thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars and fourteen cents. And out of that, from the sixty forty fund, we are paying four thousand six hundred forty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. We do have quite a few construction bills being paid today. There are lots of pages, busy time of year. I have a large payment, Denko Highway Construction Corp., we're paying for some routing, mudjacking for a project, forty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars. Then at a local option tax, we are paying Blacktop Service Company for the FY twenty-six steel coating project, one hundred sixteen thousand one hundred seventy dollars and thirty-two cents. We are purchasing twenty-twenty-five Dodge Durango for the sheriff's office for forty-two thousand six hundred four dollars and vehicle outfit to sector technology of eight thousand six oh seven thirty-six and then a little over fifty-one thousand. Then E nine one one is paying Raycom annual maintenance contract fee at one hundred seventy-seven thousand three hundred six dollars and ninety-two cents and also upgrade fee of one hundred one sixty-three nine hundred thirty-two dollars and thirty-six cents. And then also consolidated dispatch is paying Raycom a hundred and fifty thousand. Everything appears to be in order unless you have questions.
Is it a resolution? Roll call please.
Kurtma.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Item four, receive product updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning Board, Kathy Nicholas Engineer. Our bridge crew is juggling several projects right now. There's, the crane is currently not functioning, it's broken down on that Mount Vernon Road bridge replacement project that, so that is on pause for a few more days while that gets repaired. Meanwhile, the bridge crew has been over on Ordway Road. That is the bridge that, if you recall, we had to close it last year because the timber decking was failing. So that is being replaced, the tier cap, excuse me, is being replaced in preparation of being able to install that new wood decking. So they are juggling a few other, a few bridges right now at this time and will soon move over and start the replacement on Hoff Road as well in the next few weeks. Our contract work, water construction needs to come back in and finish. They have repair items on four bridges that need to happen yet before the end of the construction season this season. So Eagle Road will be closing on Thursday for probably about three weeks while water contractor comes back in and starts doing that work on that bridge. Other than that, we are starting our last round of mowing on the paved road system. And Team Road is closed right now due to high water. And that's in the northeast portion of the county. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Kathy, are they done swarmed concrete for the culvert on Dubuque Road yet?
Yes, at this point, the backfilling process is taking place by the subcontractor. And we anticipate probably what, right, three, four, five more weeks of work on that large culvert.
Okay.
But the concrete is complete. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning Board, we're a giving facilities director. Well, I am pleased to announce that the new Veterans Affairs Facility, we plan on moving that department in on this Thursday. I think there are, there's work in the background for a open house, I believe, for September fourth for that facility. So I encourage everybody to come out, take a look at it. This week, we're working on landscaping, that's coming together pretty nicely. It's really taken shape and I guess we couldn't be prouder. It's gonna be a great facility, so that was a nice project to finish up with. Couple other updates, the jail project, as you know, I think I had mentioned before, the jail kitchen is back up and running. We've been running now for about two months and have no issues. So I think we're in the clear there and that was a successful portion of that project. The HVAC upgrade is progressing. We're still running into a few challenges just with the number of contractors in that facility and having enough manpower for escorting those contractors. That's kind of a daily challenge that we're up against. And hopefully here soon, we'll be fully staffed, as you know, we are down one mechanic for that facility. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that that position will get filled here soon. Over at Pine Crest, we've got, two of the four main restrooms are now up and operational. We should be starting our elevator, hydraulic elevator project here soon. That is in the hands of the contractor and we're just awaiting a schedule for that. The first floor and second floor annex, we're in the phase of putting in light fixtures, carpeting, painting, kind of the finishing phase touches on the first floor. The second floor annex has a little bit more yet to do. HVAC, we're putting in fan coil units throughout the facility. I know the health department's been more than patient with us. We actually invaded their space here on fourth floor and got fan coil units put in there. That took a little longer than anticipated, but they are installed. So they should be able to move back into their space here soon on fourth floor. Then we'll be heading up to the fifth floor and the remainder of the building. With regards to the current VA location, we'll start demo on that phase of the project and that's for the clinic section of the project as soon as we get Yolando and his crew out of there. They're shooting for starting that on September second. Any questions on that? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning Board, Caitlin Emmerich, Public Health. I just have a couple of updates for you. From our environmental health team, they're pretty busy over the summer, as you know, with temporary food inspections. They did over five hundred temporary, annual temporary farmer's market and mobile unit inspections this summer in addition to their regular inspection cycle. Cal Congress in September kind of marks the end of their busiest season, so they're prepared to wind it down. Also from our environmental health team, mosquito in West Nile surveillance remains a pretty high concern for them. As you may know, we do mosquito surveillance monitoring where mosquitoes are trapped and then sent to a lab for testing. And we detected West Nile in our mosquito surveillance pool pretty early on in the season. And so we've been working on education around just preventing mosquito bites since we know that there's West Nile circulating in our mosquito population. From our public health center, I'm very happy to announce that our nursing staff, we are finally fully staffed with our nursing staff. We haven't been fully staffed in our clinic for a couple of years now. So we're finally fully staffed with nurses, so we're very excited about that, which prepares them really well to staff and launch our mobile clinic. So the mobile clinic arrived on the fifteenth of August. We've already started training. Brad, Metcalf, Safety Coordinator, has been very instrumental in helping with that driver training. So thank you to facilities and maintenance for sharing him with us. We are planning for a, kind of a phased event to launch the mobile clinic to the community. You all should have received an invitation for a ribbon cutting on September twenty-fourth from Caitlin Metcalf, our communications specialist. So we're gonna do that after our regular September Board of Health meeting. That event in the morning is open to elected officials, media, department heads and public health staff. And the goal is to get the word out on that day for our first public event that will happen on October first in partnership with the Food Bank and Operation threshold. So I look forward to getting those couple of things going and getting our mobile clinic introduced to the community. Any questions for me?
How many drivers are you training? I mean, how many will there be when?
Um, I think that's a fluid number. To be honest, I don't know. I think I looked at the ties kind of managing that aspect for us. I looked at the list yesterday and there were at least ten or twelve on that list. So I think we have plenty in terms of, you know, people that will be ready to drive it. We're trying to prioritize training the drivers that are also going to work, you know, so from our clinic team, direct service team first, but we do kind of have a backup list as well for some reason they would be available. So I think we're okay on drivers, actually, yeah.
That's what I always wondered, why I was like so excited to get that and then think, oh, somebody's gonna drive it now.
Yeah.
Let's see how that goes. So that's great, I was wondering.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
What time do you say on the twenty-fourth? Sorry.
Um, I believe it's a nine-thirty start. I will double check.
Yes, I think it was.
Yeah, nine-thirty start.
Good morning Board, Mike Hendrickson, Director of Black Hawk County Conservation. Just wanted to give you a quick update with the last big summer holiday right in front of us. Most of our park systems are in great shape and ready to go. I toured some of them yesterday. Campers are trickling in fairly quickly, so it's gonna be a good weekend, the weather looks good. The only black eye we have is Black Hawk Park. Again, we went through last, last week and a little, few days prior to that, we did have another flooding episode in there and I believe the river hit close to ninety-one feet using the Cedar Falls scale, which is significant. As the water went down, I did get in there yesterday and check some things out. We, unfortunately, the road going into the campgrounds, right over Snag Creek, the wall on the downstream side has failed. It basically just laid backwards and it took a big chunk of that road out. We could, we could probably get vehicles around it, but I don't think, to me, it doesn't look, there's not much integrity left to the whole system, it doesn't look like. We don't know how old that is, actually. I've been here since nineteen ninety-one, it was in way before me, I talked to some other people, that thing might be sixty years old. So until we get an engineer to take a look at that, we're not comfortable at all letting the traffic go across that even if we're gonna go around it. So unfortunately, there will be no camping at Black Hawk Park. We're willing to have the park open by the weekend so everything else can be used. It's wet and everything, but I think this weather holds it, it will be usable for the weekend, so that's big. But there will be no camping in Black Hawk. I have talked with Michelle and sent her some pictures of that. We have been in contact with, with an engineer that is scrambling some people. They may even get here by before the weekend to take a look at that and try to give us some preliminary ideas and numbers on how we can fix that because we do have a lot of great camping left and if we can at least put a Band-Aid on it that will make it safe to get us through the fall and we can start looking at something, a better fix in maybe the next budget. So anyway, otherwise, things look good and we should have a great weekend and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item five. Minutes approved for the August nineteenth meeting?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six, consent agenda. The items listed below will be acted upon by a simple resolution without separate discussion unless someone from the board or the public requests that a specific item be considered. Remove.
Second.
Roll call please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Burtonback.
Yes.
Paul.
Item seven, resolution to approve the investment advisory agreement to change the county's four fifty-seven B plan fiduciary services provider under Nationwide Freedom Pro Series platform from Morningstar Associates LLC to Creative Planning as recommended by the deferred compensation committee. Remove.
Second.
Good morning Board, Amanda Besimer, Human Resources Director. So the next several options or next several items are related to the county's four fifty-seven B plan. Brian Jimmerson, our Nationwide representative, who is also connects with other clients throughout the state, is the one who's kind of been recommending that the county look at our investments and our plans. And so all of these have come through Nationwide as well as like the National Association of Counties, NACO is who Nationwide uses for their investments for counties outside of the state of Iowa. So all of this is coming through recommendations similar to entities like ourselves who are eligible for participants to use the four fifty-seven B plan. So this first one is a fiduciary service agreement. Again, there was a change from Morningstar to Creative Planning. The change really came from that Creative Planning had a, you know, better average on historical returns for investments and reduced fees for participants and those investment funds for retirement. So we are recommending this change. As I explained in my email, that if we opt out of this change, then that means that the board and the deferred compensation committee, this internal committee, would be responsible for managing those investment funds and kind of the portfolios and making those decisions. So we recommend that we leave that to Nationwide with Brian Jimmerson and his team as well as Creative Planning for the fiduciary services as opposed to us making those choices. Any questions? On that? So that's the first one.
Do you have any questions or do you want to move to the resolution?
One question, Michelle, in this process, I was saying maybe Michelle would know the answer in this one. Is there a standard fee that they charge on this bridge?
There will be a fee that's charged to participants, but nothing that would be serious.
The participants pay that, that fee?
They're currently paying that fee with Morningstar. And so, yes, there are fees associated with these types of services. Those are, but even if we opt out, we have to kind of evaluate what that looks like. But yes, there are fees associated, similar to what they have with Morningstar, but they are lower fees.
That was what I was wondering, how much more they drop down at this point?
I don't have a number on that, but that's a follow-up question, I could, you know.
Could you follow with me on that?
Yeah, I don't know that they're gonna.
Probably a bit less, I just know there is another fee that employees don't understand when they're investing in that, that there's the fees that they invest in, but there's also the handling fee in that process.
Right, so with any kind, yeah, I mean, that is something that Brian has conversations with. There's obviously market, you know, returns for that service. And this is just fiduciary. This isn't like managing the accounts, this is just strictly like, we have to come up with an asset of, you know, funds to offer. We are a county that is eligible for four fifty-seven B, so those fees would always be there unless we want to be responsible and take on that fiduciary responsibility for participants. And I don't think we have the expertise at the county to do that. But yes, there are fees, just like what there were with Morningstar with, and with even prior to Nationwide when we were under Nationwide's umbrella, everybody had their own separate one. These type of fees are standard.
Those fees are being looked at a lot and we're seeing a lot of reduction in fees now because people are understanding now that they're losing dollars in the past, how much they're charging them. So it was good to renew this.
Yeah, it's, you know, I, again, it's, I don't know the exact, you know, margin and that might be something that Morningstar and Creative Planning, I don't know that that is public knowledge necessarily, but I can, you know, again, this is under advisement with NACO as well as Nationwide, who serves a lot of communities. And it's ultimately to be a better return for participants. Higher returns on average, lower costs, means more money in your pocket, so, but, yeah.
Do they provide more updates than do you as the committee?
So like this one was given, yeah, like this was an update because there was a change. And so either, you know, as we are the client sponsor, it's not often we get a lot of updates for deferred compensation, doesn't change. Sometimes there's law changes like the Secure Act two point O. There's some changes coming where we can actually have individuals who are at a certain age can contribute higher than what they can today. So there are some updates like that. This is more just looking at the whole plan and realizing that Nationwide made a change. So does Black Hawk County want to align with that change or do we want to do it on our own? But we do get some updates, but it's, this has probably been the most we've received since I've been in the human resources, you know, department with regards to deferred comp, but, yeah.
Deferred comp's a little bit different, I think, because our employees could live that on their own. And so our role, we want to be sure we're offering them what we consider a good product. And Grant did a really nice job at explaining that. He has really excellent educational seminars, if you haven't done, listened to one of those, he does a really nice job. So I, I think our employees are, they're getting a good product for what we have to do.
And, you know, we have seventy-seven employees actively deferring. I don't, Nationwide, even with across, you know, with fees, they have a very low fee structure, especially for four fifty-seven B plans being public sector. Knowing that their audience are, and clients of this are public employees, so they're not eligible for large commissions, they're not eligible for like large bonuses. It's, you know, competitive day and just trying to round out those benefits and complement it with the IFRS, which is a defined pension, so. But I can ask if they would share, if they have, but it's let you know, let the board know if there's any kind of margin that they can provide, but it is lower.
Yeah, that's fine. We do have a motion and a second on the resolution.
Layland.
Yes.
Burtonback.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item seven B, resolution to approve adding Nationwide Pro account as a managed account option within the Black Hawk County's four fifty-seven B retirement plan, providing participants with access to personalized investment management fiduciary orders as recommended by deferred compensation committee.
Remove.
Second.
Okay, so I'm just gonna try to do at a high level what this is. So right now, we have one platform, it's called the Freedom, the, I'm sorry, Freedom Pro Series platform, which is purely target-based assets. So what that means is there's really no flexibility with having take on like risk, for example. So this is an optional plan that participants do not have to elect into, but it does take into account that it's not just funds targeted at your age or your career length. So what this does, there are, it would be like having a financial advisor, but at a much lower cost. And so we can give that same kind of advice as a financial advisor would, but at a lower fee. They could take a target date fund, as they would, but then after that, they could say, do I have a high risk tolerance, a low risk tolerance and kind of utilize that with the pro account. Some of the fee structured, so it's the annual program fee, I do have that information. For the first hundred thousand, it's point six five percent. To put that in perspective, for every ten thousand dollars under that, it would cost sixty-five dollars per year to run this service or five dollars a month. There are breaking points up to at a hundred and fifty thousand, for the next hundred and fifty thousand, next hundred thousand, then half million and above, and they go down from there. So the highest you're paying is sixty-five percent. But, you know, there is no guarantee, of course, but studies show that over twenty thousand participants in Nationwide in four fifty-seven B are in a plan that over a five-year period have better results. Usually if you're in a target date, like what we have today, you kind of end up with an average result. If you're in a managed plan like this, accounting for risk, then you could have, do up to a percentage point better, which over a twenty or thirty-year career would be more fun for the participant. One thing he also pointed out to us is that our asset allocation, this is looking at our peers, so similar counties across the state as well as throughout the nation. Our assets, because we only offer the Freedom Pro Series, sixty-two percent of our assets are in that target date category. When compared to peer groups, they typically have like twenty-three percent. So we're much higher and mainly that is because we have, there's a lot of great funds available to employees under four fifty-seven B, but we don't offer that as an employer just because we haven't opted for this plan. And there's no cost to the employer, there would be additional fees for a managed service to the participant, but that would give them the option, do I want, is that, you know, additional cost worth it to possibly have a higher return on my investments? Or am I just more comfortable sticking with the target date and continuing having, you know, average results? So, no minimum participation, so if we have no participants, that's fine. It doesn't say you have to have at least five percent of your staff, you know, participate. There's also no minimum balance, no long-term contract and participants are free to come and go as they choose. So let's say they try it out for a couple of years, they're like, no, I want to go back, they can do that at no cost. Yeah, that's, that is a pro plan, again, it's just, you know, giving participants more options for their unique circumstances and their financial goals.
This is a resolution.
Burtonback.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Yes. Item seven C, resolution to approve adding Income America as an investment option with Black Hawk County four fifty-seven B retirement plan as recommended by deferred compensation committee.
Remove.
Second.
Okay, this is another optional plan. The Income America Five For Life, these are target date funds that are age-appropriate investments that offer growth potential, protection from market volatility and the opportunity to turn your four fifty-seven savings into a stream of guaranteed lifetime income. How Brian kind of summarized this is it's similar to another pension. So the example they give, they have an employee that says they turned fifty-five, they decide to move sixty thousand dollars of their investments to this Income For Life or Income America Five For Life, that establishes their income base. Over the next ten years, nearing age sixty-five, she grows that with contributions to a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. What this plan says is that you get five percent of that every year for the rest of your life. So they said with market growth, let's say that a hundred and forty-three thousand was two hundred thousand dollars, that means you're getting ten thousand dollars for life. And it's not, you know, you could look at, and it, it does say that even if that, that two hundred thousand dollars goes to zero, you still, and you outlive that, you still continue to get ten thousand dollars. So it's kind of like a pension. So for example, if you retire at age sixty-five under that scenario, that two hundred thousand dollars would technically last you till you're eighty-five, but it would go beyond that if you would outflip that, even if the balance would go to zero. So this is just, again, kind of pairs well with the IFRS. Under IFRS, we get sixty-five percent of our I five, or if you're in law enforcement, it's a little bit different, there's a bit higher percentage. But, so again, just an optional plan and one that is a little bit more guaranteed, which I think resonates with our employees, considering most of, you know, everybody is under the IFRS program.
With these updates and new options, remind me, do folks have to wait for open enrollment to enroll in the deferred?
Nope, they can do it at any time. So, yep, and the easiest way is we'll send out information following this, but we And the easiest way is we'll send out information following this, but we do have a plan for Brian to be here September third. And we try to have him here physically at least two to three times a year. But it's simply just setting up a thirty-minute meeting with him and talking through your options, or it could be, you know, up to an hour as well. When he's here, they're usually thirty-minute sessions, but no, it's no open enrollment, no kind of qualifying that you can enroll and drop as many times as you'd like. Many times is payroll will put up with it because they have to do all the contributions and everything, but it's pretty seamless or not seamless.
This one sounds more like an annuity.
Yeah, but it's not an annuity. You did correct. Yeah, that's what Michelle said, actually, during the meeting. She said it's an annuity set, sort of.
It's a hybrid.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so. But again, I think it's a one that pairs well with our current retirement offerings under I-PERS. The committee recommends approving it.
Roll call please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Kurtenbach.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item seven D, resolution to approve adding Dynamic Default as a default investment option on the Blackhawk County four fifty-seven B retirement plan is recommended by deferred compensation.
Second.
Okay, so this is a feature and this is, I would say, a pretty rare situation that would happen. But sometimes we may have participants that they start deferring, but they haven't really picked a plan. And so they're deferring and they kind of get defaulted into whatever their age is and the length of their career. And then it never changes. With the dynamic default, it takes into account their age. So it is defaulting to what their initial age and career expectation is. And then it moves it, you know, at certain milestones throughout their life. So that it is moving it in a way so that you're not, if you started deferring at age twenty-five in that target date and you've never moved it at age fifty-five, you may not want to still be in that same target date as a twenty-five-year-old. So it's actually kind of automatically just putting it into the fund that makes sense with the target date. So again, it's rare that we see anybody not make a selection like a target date fund where they're kind of already. But if somebody just starts deferring and they haven't selected, they technically could do that. This is going to help keep their investments going on the right path towards a target date. This is one that it would be pretty much automatic. You wouldn't really opt out of it. It's kind of a feature that they, you know, would, would put in place if, again, somebody would start to defer, but not even make an election. Not widely used, but just something that I noticed has had help with. Luke, so. Any questions other than that?
Do you want a roll call please?
Kurtenbach.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item eight A, motion to authorize the Mayfair's by human resource director to show me your findings directed at signatories on behalf of Blackhawk County for administrative procedural documents provided by Nationwide related to the plan adopted, plan adoptions approved by the board on August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
All right, so this just authorizes Michelle or I to be able to carry out any of those documents related to this. The chair is authorized to sign everything today, but there are a lot of materials with that. So if we, you know, have a signature on this one, this just allows Michelle or I to sign so we can get this moving and get communication out to employees and participants. Any questions at all? All right, we'll be sending material. Thank you everyone for your support.
Thank you. All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eight B, resolution to approve the Blackhawk County Strategic Plan twenty twenty-five through twenty-seven, which establishes new mission statement, core values, and designated strategic priorities guiding the future direction of Blackhawk County. So moved. Motion and a second. Do you have anything?
I don't have any comments. Today, after, if this passes, we'll be having our community event tonight. As you can see, the boardroom's in the process of being painted, but it's been a long process, I think, as we all know, getting to this point. And, yeah, but I don't know if you have any questions for me or?
Will Maria be there? All right.
Yeah, so you've received some emails about the way that the wall could look. That's open to revision. I've got materials for staff, like things that they can put behind their badges to remember their mission and values. And we'll be working with the different departments on signage in their, their offices that are specific to their spaces.
So when are we anticipating the walls being added?
Oh, yes, good question. So I found out that if you put a decal on paint too soon, it'll take the paint right off. And so we don't want that. So probably the week of September eighth.
I, I had asked a minute, like, of course, it's quite, you know, now. But try to figure out how much time we've spent on Strategic Planning. It is, I know it's one thousand nine hundred and seventy-three hours.
Estimate, yes.
Estimate, yeah.
But that is correct, but.
It's all the sidebars.
Yeah, yeah. Plus the homework, plus the, all right, sixty-six staff, elected officials engaged in the planning portion. That's not just the input, but beyond with planning. This really has been intense. But hopefully it's. I have faith that we'll have, we'll, we'll, we'll put it to use, right? It's not a, it's not a dust collector. It's a really strong process for us, I think, to move forward, which is exciting. So just wanted to take the opportunity, I guess, to thank elected officials, staff, community members that provided input as well. We've got a good team of folks behind all of us and we're excited to see where it goes.
Yeah, I didn't count the actual sessions, but we went back to last November and I think we all, part of that Strategic Planning team with you all and all the elected officials department has, it's been a really rewarding experience. I have definitely gotten really positive feedback about it. And, yeah, when you start to look at, like you said, one thousand nine hundred and seventy-three hours, you know, just out of, that's just in those sessions, working together across sixty-six staff, that was that kind of Strategic Planning team. That doesn't even include the focus groups, the surveys, all the work behind the scenes. But it was a really kind of eye-opening to see how far we've come, but.
All the rollouts and everything done in the departments, the internal things, there's just a lot of time that, yeah, we hadn't even calculated. Thank you. See you later.
Jeff, roll call.
Yes, well, I mean, I think it's great because it gives us a path forward. And as the marketing person who does communication, it really helps me kind of streamline, you know, my focus too, so.
All right, this is a resolution.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Kurtenbach.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item eight D, resolution of the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Catherine Nicholas. County engineer be approved and direct the chair to sign for saying to purchase one twenty-twenty-five Remir wood chipper in the amount of eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and eighty-two cents from the Remir, Iowa and North Missouri, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
So our current chipper is approximately over thirty years old and just due to equipment, wear and tear on equipment and new safety features being available, we did want to budget for a new chipper in FY twenty-six budget. So we budgeted ninety-five thousand dollars for that in anticipation also that our roadside biologist would write a grant. And we did receive a grant for fifteen thousand dollars to help us offset the cost of the chipper. Our roadside biologist has been demoing, working with conservation in particular, demoing different models earlier this year. He did come up with one that really fits our needs really well. We did use Sourcewell, the Nationwide Cooperative purchasing, cooperative, excuse me, to, to get this, the price of it for the eighty-six, eight hundred and five dollars. So that's the route we're going to purchase it and we would like to be able to purchase this. We feel that this machine really fits our needs well and does provide us some added safety features, particularly of course, our thirty-year-old chipper.
So this is, so it's eighty-six thousand with a fifteen thousand dollar grant, so that real cost will be seventy-one?
No.
Or real cost will be eighty-six?
I believe that the cost is eighty-six and yes.
Eighty-six is the full expense. We will be giving the fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, okay.
And we'll stick out. So that's showing us the revenue side on our, on the way, so this is the whole stuff.
What's the, what's the life expectancy on the, on the new one now?
At least thirty.
Thirty years.
Well, yeah, yeah, it was anyways.
Probably similar, similar twenty-five years. It would be a good life expectancy, providing we give it routine maintenance. And we are, you know, we have mechanics who do that. So we would expect twenty-five years of life out of the chipper now more.
Fargo, is that the movie?
Yes.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on this. Roll call please.
Bryant.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Kurtenbach.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item eight E, resolution, the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer be approved and direct the chair to sign for saying to purchase one twenty-foot crane boom section in the amount of twenty thousand, one hundred dollars from Cleveland, Cleveland Crane Shovel Sales Bedford Heights, Ohio. So removed.
Second.
Okay, as further explanation of this one, in FY twenty-six, we budgeted one hundred thousand dollars for Boom and Diesel Hammer. And I told you in that process that currently we operate under a fully manual process with our man-to-man crane. We have a very experienced crane operator. However, he is approaching, nearing some of the last years of his work with Blackhawk County, we're assuming. So in order to prepare us for his retirement, eventual retirement, we wanted to get more of an automated, more of an industry standard, a safer process. And that includes using a diesel hammer to drag our pile. So that includes buying some new equipment. We budgeted a hundred thousand dollars, like I said. And we knew it would be several components that would make up this purchase. The first part of this purchase is buying a larger boom, so making our crane longer. So that's what we are asking for, to be able to purchase a twenty-foot section of boom for the crane in order to handle this diesel hammer. So that twenty-foot section will cost us approximately twenty, twenty thousand, one hundred dollars from Cleveland Crane. And then we'll be coming back to you a little bit later, probably in a few more weeks, as we work out the details of the actual diesel hammer itself. Can I answer any questions about this purchase?
And that includes doing three.
Yes.
So resolution, roll call please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Kurtenbach.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item eight F, motion to direct the county ordinance to advertise for a public hearing to be held at nine oh five Tuesday, September ninth in Board Room two oh one of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, three sixteen East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa. Unproposed ordinance number one forty-eight, ordinance establishing the election precincts of Blackhawk County replacing its entirety the present election precincts ordinances number one, one, sorry, number one forty-four and one forty-five, code of ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
So this is just the next step on our redistricting process for Senate file twenty-five. So maybe just a reminder, it just moved two people in this process. But in the redistricting process in twenty twenty, we have two separate ordinances. So I talked to Mike and this was just a really good opportunity to combine the two. So moving forward, we just have the one.
All right, so this is a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item nine, reports information from the board.
I'm giving some updates from the ISAC conference last week. Several things I sent out to board the, handout that was on the legislative items, got a chance to look at those. The folks with ISAC are still planning on coming around and visiting with us. They're doing their ninety-nine county tour. We didn't have a date yet on some of those, but that's in the works. There was several building ordinance items that were brought up. And in that, one was what they call ADUs. It's, I remember what it was. Alternate dwelling, accessory dwelling units. It's where folks may put up a separate home outside the actual residence of the facility for if they have family parents or if they have children with needs, where they can kind of independently live without, it's like having two homes on the same property. There seems to be a big push. There was some state legislation change last year. So, and I just seen that Cedar Falls is adopting in their planning and zoning, putting something filed in. It had to do with Governor Reil signing the state law, Senate File five nine two. But there were several counties that brought up the concern that we need to be working on that soon because it's coming.
And that was something, it was interesting, our, when we interviewed our last P and Z applicant, he was doing one of those. I was going to say for his sister and she had a special needs child and I think it was the first one in the state. So he was becoming an expert on that for us. So I thought that might be helpful.
Another one was there's in topics for supervisors, Bitcoin mining. There seems to be quite a bit of that developing in different counties. And the problem is, is they'll put these trailers in for bit mining and then they're trying to skirt the ability to be taxed for putting equipment or any kind of investment in the property. So there is also ordinances that need to be addressed with that. A lot of these will be checked with Mike and see where we need to go with some of this stuff. Another one was horizontal pressure tanks. One county had over six hundred of them, whether it's ammonia tanks or stuff. The county receives dollars, they're assessed. So they're trying to do some changes where they can be, not be accessible as far as being assessed. So that was another one. Another issue they brought up was the whole pipeline thing. There was a lot of concern that that's more than just a pipeline. It has to do with ordinances, county ordinances and having these companies come in and abide by our county ordinances. So that lawsuit, two counties now are moving forward with that, with the pipeline. And we expect to be hearing more details with that and how it's going to affect all the counties in Iowa. There's a lot more detail on that just than the item with the pipeline. We had one session had to deal with the, I'm going to need some help with this. We were just talking about with Caitlin a couple of weeks ago, Health and Human Services for our folks in, with mental health needs. I talked with Julie Davis, who is going to be our District Seven representative. She is planning on coming and having a visit with us here in the future. I did get a map of different districts and how they're, they are struggling. They got, was, they were given a big task with not much information and it was interesting hearing their struggles as well and caring for people. It was very obvious that that's what their intent is. It's just they're getting piecemeal information. And it's been very, very troubling for them in that process. The property tax discussion, there was quite a bit of conversation on that as well, under legislative items. They did recommend that we meet with our local legislators and explain not just the dollars that's affected by this, but the time and the process our staff have in dealing even with TIF dollars. And we received a compensation for all the, the time that the cities or the school boards don't get anything as far as, not just tax laws, but we're actually spending dollars on our staff to do, maintain these things, the TIF areas. There is actually three proposals. They're expecting to come forward in the next session dealing with property tax. So none of them are in ground or for sure. And one item they are asking is that if they do any changes with property tax, that they give it two years before they enact. So it isn't just reenact- So it isn't just we enact it, and then we're gonna slam it on the county, cities, and school boards that next year. One other item had to do with the E nine-one-one surcharge. That issue's not over. They do have to do something because of the unfettered access that the state has now for our county funds. There was a lot of discussion and, I'm gonna say concern, but it was actually fear of what's gonna happen when they're trying to do budgets in nine-one-ones. It was very interesting, met a lot of people at the conference. Highly recommend, I hope to be going back. I'd like to finish the certification for supervisors and that. But seeing a lot of our staff there as well. Karen and I had time in one of the session together, and there's a lot of information there. Thanks for the information. Thanks for going.
Interesting legislative session, I'm sure.
Yeah, well, we are.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the crypto, we did, Linda was on the board at the time, but we did turn down operation. It's been a couple of years now. There's a number of communities that have accepted little data centers of any kind, because it's all the same kind, operates the same. I really regret it. What it does to their water, what it's their utilities, and usually there's maybe about five people working in one of these, yeah, every day, so. At that time, I think Mike had said that a moratorium wasn't possible, because I had asked about that, but it's, but I'd like to explore more.
I don't recall the discussion in detail. I just remember we had concerns. Was it for changing something or something? Is it something to do with that?
It was, I was just looking for a way to have a moratorium on.
But I'm talking, that particular item came before the board, seemed it is.
That came through zoning, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't recall the discussion on the moratorium, but I can certainly look into it. It was concerning, because you take, it took a lot of, they just saw so much electricity and create a situation where there was concern that it would actually potentially make electricity more expensive. There was environmental concerns.
All right, unless there's anything else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gary? See you this afternoon.